Call to order the May 2018 meeting of the Morrisville Planning and Zoning Board. Please join me for a moment of prayer or quiet reflection. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the many blessings of this life, including our ability tonight to meet in freedom. Guide us in our thoughts and deliberations that we may make the best decisions for current and future residents of Morrisville. We also ask for your comfort and protection for those throughout the world who are working for peace. Protect those in danger and comfort those who are suffering. And also in our thoughts are our own first responders. We ask these things in your name. Amen. Thank you. So we're all assembled with a full attendance, including one alternate. Courtney, any changes to the agenda from your side?
No, sir.
Any changes from the board's side? Being known, I think we'll just adopt the agenda as written. Does anybody have any changes to the April minutes? Marty, I think you had the addition of one word.
I added one word.
Okay. Anybody else with any additions, changes? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the April 2018 minutes.
April 12, 2018 minutes.
I have a second. Motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Carried. Catherine, you're going to be contributing to the discussion but not voting this evening.
Of course.
Thank you.
Not myself.
I don't think it would have hurt, but we're good. So move right ahead to item six. Want to introduce this, Ben?
Just have a short presentation before we get to the public comment. So tonight, provide you a brief overview of the agency comments we've received on the draft, on the February 23 draft of the plan. We'll once again go over the proposed modifications to the draft plan that we've talked about at the last couple of meetings and the agency comments have been integrated, the responses to agency comments have been integrated into that. We'll also, once again, review the schedule, some public, the public input opportunities of our public comment session, then we'll have time at the end for Planning and Zoning Board discussion. So for the agency comments, we had request, we'd sent out requests for comments to the Town of Cary Transportation Planning folks, City of Durham Transportation Planning Group, the RTP Senior Planner, NC DOT Division Five Planning Engineer, and RDU. RDU did not respond, but everyone else did send us some comments which are provided. And as a reminder, Attachment Five also has all of the agency comments and staff responses, and that was in your packets.
Interesting, it was like a city fight. I mean, like, they do use, I was like, wow.
So the Town of Cary sent back comments on the, on their Kit Creek Greenway, which will now be running through a portion of our jurisdiction if the county approves our request to extend our ETJ. So the Kit Creek Greenway in Cary is identified as one of their five crosstown routes, and it's planned to ultimately extend from Morrisville Parkway all the way up to Kit Creek Road, providing connections to RTP, Parkside Town Commons, which is the large shopping center at O'Kelly Chapel Road and NC 55, Northwest Park and Carpenter Elementary School. There's approximately .4 miles of greenway already constructed north of Morrisville Parkway, and then Cary also has an existing greenway easement through the development around River Pine Drive. So the, our response was that since we have requested Wake County to consider adding the parcel outlined in red to our ETJ, we will add that section of Kit Creek Greenway in, that will ultimately hopefully be in our ETJ into the draft update of our plan. City of Durham provided several comments, mostly technical in nature, but they do have on the roadway recommendations, they commented about Davis Drive, essentially that their, in their Conference of Transportation Plan for the MPO, as well as, as well as their MPO's Draft 2045 MTP, they did not have any widening on, on Davis Drive because their model showed that there was none needed. And essentially, our response to that, that you'll see on the next slide, is that we had to use an older version of the model. And then they also commented on NC 54 widening, again, and that there's potential conflict between our draft CTP and their plans. And then on bicycle and pedestrian recommendations, they, in their CTP, they recommend bike lanes on Davis Drive and a multi-use path adjacent to both NC 147 and NC 54. We respond, our response is, of course, we do have a difference in some of the travel data because of the version of the model that we had to use. We had to use a 2010 base year model. Their CTP and, and now approved 2045 MTP use the 2015 base year model, so they, they used a little bit more advanced of a model, and their base year was 2015 instead of 2010. As far as bicycle and pedestrian recommendations, our plan does include side paths on Davis Drive, which are consistent with the recommendation in Cary's community plan. We have recommended a different alignment of NC 147 than the, than the, than the draft MTP at that point showed, although it has now been revised to show roughly our alignment. And so, and we also consider 147, we've always considered be more of a freeway type route, which is why we did not show a, a multi-use path, and now it doesn't even come into our jurisdiction. And then we do provide for a 10-foot wide side path, or recommend 10-foot wide side path on the east side of NC 54. Research Triangle Park had comments on a couple of the proposed roadway extensions. One was on the NC 147 extension with the new proposed alignment in our draft plan that aligns it out to Davis Drive at Little Drive. Essentially, RTP staff is in general agreement with the alignment. However, they did point out that it does go through one of their sites, one of their only undeveloped sites remaining on this side of the park. But they, they do understand the alignment's conceptual, and final alignment would depend on site and field conditions, and would be subject to approval by both the park, or Research Triangle Foundation, which runs the park, and NC DOT. They also provided comment on the Melissent Way extension. They're, again, in general agreement with the connection, whether it's a roadway or a greenway connection, but of course reminded us once again that connection would require both NC DOT and RTF approval prior to construction. And they have since also said that they are working to provide an easement through their property there at Little Drive where that connection would be, so that if in the future a connection was made, again, whether roadway or a greenway, it would make the connection a little bit easier because the easement would already be in place for it. Our staff response, of course, is 140, the, the reason we had requested comment from them, and that they had commented on the 147 extension alignment is because we had specifically requested their input on that alignment, because we realized that it does go through their property. And then we'd also requested input on an extension of Town Hall Drive north of McCrimmon Parkway to provide secondary access to neighborhoods along the west side of Church Street between McCrimmon Parkway and NC 540, somewhat related to 147, and they have said that they're open to a conceptual alignment in that location as well. Melissent Way extension, again, we had requested input on this specifically because it ran through part of their property. We did, we let them know that the, this board has desdained Melissent Way for further discussion, further study in the draft plan as either roadway, greenway, or no connection, and agree that RTP will be part of this study, any study that is done in the future of this connection, and would be integral to deciding how the connection, if it is ever made, how it would be made. And then NC DOT also provided comments, again, some of their comments are a little bit more in the, of the technical nature, but, and some are, are just, and then some were on some committed projects, so they wanted to, they suggested clarifying the I-40 widening that we reference in, in one of the chapters, I believe it's in Chapter Three, and clarifying that the I-40 widening is, whether it's auxiliary lanes that are planned and committed between 540 and Harrison, or whether they're the managed lanes, which is another project that's in the STIP to create essentially toll lanes on I-40. And then also recommended including Airport Boulevard Interchange Project into the table of committed projects.
What is, may I ask what that is?
What?
On my list of questions for later.
They asked about the modeled congestion year for Figure 3.1. They, they thought there was some confusion with the roadway hierarchy and that questioned whether local street classification meant a town-maintained road. They also thought that the, our street cross-section 3A implied that sharrows may be used on 45-mile per hour roadways. For Davis Drive, they questioned why we only have the widening for Morrisville Carpenter Road north when we have a figure in our plan that shows it's, it may be over capacity south of Morrisville Carpenter Road. They also questioned why we provided four sections of NC 54 and say that limits are difficult to follow. Had a couple of points on Morrisville Carpenter Road, one clarified the location and the grade separation, and then more of a project level consideration of adding or converting the existing laneage at Davis Drive to two westbound three lanes at Davis Drive, and then questioned our use of strategic corridors, and wanted to make sure that it was clear that our strategic corridors are different than NC DOT's strategic transportation corridors. They also request, said, say that a map of the recommended roadway extensions that are listed in Table 3.6 would be helpful, as well as a map of all the intersection improvement locations in Table 3.5, and asked about our roadway prioritization if that would feed into Campo's MTP Horizon years. And we provided responses for all these. We, in the next version of the draft, we will clarify the I-40 widening projects, and we will also add Airport Boulevard Interchange into Table 3.1. We will, we clarified that Figure 3.1 modeled congestion year is 2040. We provide some clarification on the roadway hierarchy, that essentially the classifications are Morrisville-specific but using common terminology between both DOT and, and the federal government, which is why we mixed some terminology there, and then clarified that local streets as a classification does not necessarily denote maintenance responsibility. Clarified that we will be following MUTCD guidance on installation of sharrows. For Davis Drive, we explained that the, our recommendation matches that recommendation, the recommendation from the Cary Community Plan for four-lane cross-section on Davis Drive south of Morrisville Carpenter Road. For NC 54, explained that our sections match the NC 54 More Feasibility Study, the STIP, and the Campo 2045 MTP. We will clarify the location of the grade separation on Morrisville Carpenter Road in the next draft, and then just clarified that the two westbound three lanes will be and have been considered, on Morrisville Carpenter Road, will be considered as part of a future intersection improvement, but have also been considered under our current project as well. And then we do not believe that the, our use of strategic corridors would cause any confusion with NC DOT's strategic transportation corridors. We clarified that the, both roadway, recommended roadway extensions and intersection improvements are shown on Figure 5-2 in Chapter 5, and then clarified our roadway prioritization. Again, it's a local prioritization, does not necessarily directly feed into MTP Horizon years, although the timelines are similar and can be matched where appropriate. Now, a review of our recommended modifications.
Maybe Ben, if I could stop you there. Does anybody have any questions or comments on this big section that we've just been through?
My one question that I did write down, if I may.
Please, go ahead.
The Airport Boulevard Interchange at I-40?
Yes.
Can, is that a, is that a, making it bigger, or what does that mean?
It's a funded project to essentially replace the existing interchange and redesign it. They've looked at a couple of different options. We have not heard for sure, but our understanding is that the most likely option they will go with is converting into what they call the Diverging Diamond Interchange, which is a, it's essentially will make it look almost like an X. So if you're, if you're heading up Airport Boulevard towards the airport, you will, the, your lanes will go from the right side of the road, will actually switch over to the left side of the road at the interchange, and then will switch back over after the interchange. So the lanes actually crisscross, and that is, and what that does is allows the, essentially continuous flow movements onto the exit ramps without having to turn left across traffic to get on or off.
Right, yeah, that makes a lot of sense.
So, but that's a committed project.
Versus a clover league, it's just a different design, so, okay. Thank you, I just, was a new one on me.
Is there comments?
I had a question, so going back to the thing with Durham and Morrisville, so we're using older data, so is newer data indicating less traffic? Is that what this amounts to?
Essentially, yes. The, when we started our plan, the only approved model.
Right, no, yeah, right.
Was 2010.
Right, but they had the 2015, I mean, I figured maybe it would show more cars, but I guess that isn't correct.
Every time they update the model, they, it does generally show more traffic, but one of the other things that they're continuously working on with the model updates is where that, how the model shows where traffic goes, and that we have seen in a couple of instances on previous model updates. One in particular during the NC 54 and More Feasibility Study, it was, that was done during the time we were switching between models. The older model put a lot of traffic on 54 because it was saying, oh, this is a secondary route to I-40, and cars are gonna, are gonna jump off of I-40 and onto 54, instead of using some of the other surface routes, regardless of how busy 54 gets. The updated version of the model had better algorithms that, no, cars are gonna realize 54 gets clogged up and are gonna use other routes. So that's probably part of it, too, is that it, car, the model is getting better at predicting which routes cars will go as the road starts to get heavily congested.
Thank you, Ben.
Now, just to overview our recommended modifications one more time that we have to date. Again, we'll, some general modifications, adding hyperlinks to the table of contents, adding a table of contents title and list of figures title, adding the Town Hall Drive extension in a couple of different, which impacts a couple of different chapters. Again, that's one that we've talked about, to provide that secondary access to neighborhoods along Church Street between McCrimmon Parkway and 540. We will provide hyperlinks to terms in the text of the document to Appendix A to the glossary. We won't be able to hyperlink to individual glossary terms, but we'll at least be able to hyperlink to the glossary. We are not proposing any changes in Chapter One, and in Chapter Two, we'll revise a couple of figures to show the Crabtree-Hatcher Creek Greenway and the connections from that greenway to both the existing section of Crabtree Crossing Parkway and Morrisville Carpenter Road as existing greenways, as one section is complete and the other section is under construction now. In Chapter Three, we'll revise Figure 3.2 to include road names for all the streets included in the hierarchy. Again, double-check, make sure that project lengths in Table 3.3 match project sheets in Appendix C. Revise Figure 3-3 to reflect that the recommended alignment of NC 147 in the draft does not match the preferred NC DOT alignment. That was a recommendation from this board. Also clarify that the widening on I-40 consists of adding auxiliary lanes and managed lanes under other relevant committed roadway projects on Page 3-2. That was to address the NC DOT comment. As well as updating Table 3.1 to include Airport Boulevard I-40 interchange, and then specifying that the Morrisville Carpenter Road grade separation is located at the intersection of Morrisville Carpenter Road, the railroad tracks, NC 54, and Aviation Parkway. And again, those last three are all from that, are all in response to NC DOT. Chapter Four, some additional modifications, adding multi-use paths that have been recently installed at Lake Crabtree Apartment Development, revising Figure 4.6 to show the Crabtree-Hatcher Creek Greenway and the connections as existing, extending green, the greenway proposed on the east side of Church Street for Sawmill Creek Greenway north to connect to the Church Street and Shiloh Community Parks in Figure 4.6. That was a request from the Town Council. We will also look at adding greenway connections from McCrimmon Parkway Extension, the Phase Two, to the greenway proposed along the eastern boundary of Morrisville in Figure 4.6. Again, a request from Town Council. And to address Cary's comment, we will add that section of Kit, of their Kit Creek Greenway connecting to Lewis Stevens Road at Parkside Valley Drive in Figure 4.6. Chapter Five, we've got to revise some table and figure numbers. They, there's some copies there and wrong, wrong numbers and to, and some duplicates. We'll also be updating the Crabtree Crossing Parkway Extension label on 5.3, once again to show those existing greenways. We'll be labeling greenways on Figure 5.3 a little bit better and moving the location on side path on Airport Boulevard. Also add the, we'll be adding a couple of action items in Table 5.6. One is Intersection Safety Improvement Study Program that we had talked about, and also an action item to evaluate the cross-section for Church Street to acquire fourteen-foot, fourteen-foot wide lanes with sharrows. Also, we'll be modifying the prioritized roadway improvements in Table 5.8 as listed there on the screen, changing several to short-term, midterm, and long-term, and also adding NC 54 and Keybridge Drive intersection, and Davis Drive and Parkside Valley Drive intersection to short-term improvements, and also make sure that the table is on one page in the document, in the revised document. Finally, in Chapter Five, revising the prioritization of Airport Boulevard grade separation to short-term in Table 5.6, and then the extension of Airport Boulevard to midterm in that table, and again, that's from this board. We'll also be revising Figure 5.2 to reflect that the recommended alignment of NC 147 in our draft CTP does not match the preferred NC DOT alignment. Again, that's a request from this board. And then adding that section of Cary's Kit Creek Greenway connecting to Lewis Stevens Road at Parkside Valley Drive to Table 5-8 and Figure 5.3 to address Cary's comment. In Appendix B, we'll be revising the right-of-way widths for cross-sections to accommodate all elements, and where, where feasible or makes sense, possibly reducing some of those right-of-way widths, but making sure that we have adequate right-of-way widths on all of our cross-sections. And then in Appendix C, we'll be adding the following, adding project sheets for Markham Drive Extension, Morrisville East Connector, and Southport Drive Extension, as well as ensuring that all the project lengths on the project sheets match the project lengths in Table 3-3. And then as a final reminder of our schedule, we are here on May 10th, we'll have our public comment session, and then we expect the Planning and Zoning Board may choose to close the public comment session tonight, have additional board discussion and questions, and if the board can complete their discussion and questions tonight and provide, and we can have a final list of all the changes needed this draft, we will go back and make all those changes and release a, and bring you a new draft Conference of Transportation Plan update document to your June meeting, at which time you can make a recommendation to Town Council. And of course, this is at board discretion, so if you feel you need more time, you certainly can take it, but this is the schedule we have proposed and have been working under. Public input opportunities, just an update on our Conference of Engagement campaign. April's over, so you can see all the events that we did in April and, and late March. We've completed two other, or three other events so far in May. We were out at Park West Village at their concert series last week, and then on Monday we were at the Morrisville Aquatics and Fitness Center, both around lunch, during the day, and then in the evening. This Saturday, we'll be out at Morrisville Community Park, and then next week, we'll be at Brecken, at the Breckenridge Clubhouse. Again, we'll be at Spring Fest next weekend, and then we have a, we're scheduled to attend the Chamber of Commerce's Coffee and Connections on May 24th, and then we'll be at Triangle Rock Club on May 23rd. Just a reminder of the methods of outreach we've been using for these events. The opportunity number two is a public comment portal, which has remained up, and again, just a reminder of how to get to the public comment portal. The one thing I did want to mention on that portal is that after your packets were distributed, actually, I think they came in just within the last day or two, we have received five additional comments through the portal that essentially all are from, appear to be from the Breckenridge neighborhood and voiced concerns about the Melissent Way extension, once again. So, and we will, as we've done in the past, we'll compile those into a final list of public comments for you and provide those to you in June. And then finally, we have the public comment session for tonight, and then following the public comment session, if the board has any further, would like to have any further discussion or has any further questions.
Thank you, Ben. So with that, I think we need to reopen the public comment session, and then following that, we'll have our own board discussion. So Marty, who is first on our list to speak? I think you're the first. I've probably lost it, okay. Thank you.
Is it possible to bring up that Table 1.1, please?
Our first speaker is Michael Schlenk.
It's a confusing thing on the website, I'll have to say. I meant to comment when they, here's a link I'm clicking here, and it seems to go to Morrisville stuff, but yet.
I'm Michael Schlenk, other than 416 Willingham Road in Morrisville. Yeah, I'm a Breckenridge resident. I'm here tonight speaking on behalf of myself as a regular resident, and I first want to thank you all for taking the time and effort you do to join the board and spend time doing this. I know how it can impact your families and your life. I understand that. My goal tonight is to use my three minutes and, oh, sorry, and just kind of give you a little perspective. Back in the original plan that this table I asked to have pulled up is 2008, 2009, that was part of Assistant Committee, they were kind of on that, the Transportation Plan, and we actually did the update, which I think you'll get through later in the year. So I just wanted to give you some perspective on that, because a lot of the issues, especially the, and which I'll talk about is the connection issues, were, were discussed at that point, too, with the Assistant Committee, which made a recommendation, then went to P&amp;Z, and then went on to the Town Council. So I was a big proponent of, when that happened, to, the public was out there wondering if you, we know you take our input, but what do you do with it? And so it was an opportunity then for the public citizens to vet with the town staff and the consultants over those issues, and it worked out well, I thought, and I was hoping that it would be used again, but that's fine. And again, I, back to kind of this, that was, you asked, this was going to be done, I think, by the end of last year, which was fine, but I think it got delayed. I'm glad you've taken deliberation, so I'm here quickly to describe the connection points, Green, Melissent, and Crabtree Crossing Extension, which I think you're going to change the name to Town Hall Drive Extension. Those were all very hotly debated. Those were all very hotly debated issues among the citizens and everything. Green was the only one that made it on the final plan, and I think now you've given Green the token off, but you're debating whether to leave the other two on. I would tell you that you've heard about Millicent. I'm a big proponent. I live in that area of greenways. When you review the land in the Wake County Transportation Plan, the big thing they're saying is get people out of their cars and walking. So that's why I'm a big proponent of the Millicent connection and have for years. Crabtree Crossing Extension, in the brief amount of time I have left, I think there's another option out there. It's a twenty-five, you put on restrictions, and the road won't be built, you say until for 25 years, so why not just leave it off? There'll be three, if not four, transportation update plans between now and then. You've heard from the community, you've heard from people like the Prestonwood Country Club, the Prestonwood HOA. You've even heard from the mayor of Cary who tells their citizens they don't want it either because it's going to pull traffic through that neighborhood off Cary Parkway. Thank you very much, and have a wonderful evening.
Thank you, Michael. Next, Eric Lidle. Mr. Lidle, if you could just give us your address, just for the record. Thank you.
Yeah, I want to honor you guys because I don't know if I could do this. I'd be asleep. You've got a lot on your plate from what I can see. But I disagree with him for the Crabtree Crossing. I've lived in Morseville since the town hall, we met in that building right there. So I live on Church Street, sometimes...
Again, for the record, if you would...
Pardon?
If you would just give us your address into the microphone so that we can...
I'm at 127 Skoggins Avenue.
Thank you very much.
I live right downtown, so all the downtown traffic pretty much affects me. Sometimes I can't even get this way. But I believe we passed two different bond referendums to put that through. The first time was back in the low 2000s, and I think Margaret Bodra, I talked to her about it years ago about it, and she says there was pressure from Cary that they don't want it. But the Cary people are the ones that are coming through Cary. I see the vast majority of the cars on the road in Morseville aren't from Morseville. So...
All right.
I want to be to the point that you understand where I'm coming from.
Thank you, Mr. Lidle.
If you really want to get feedback, put a sign out by the road. Like with two numbers, say for or against.
They come up to the box.
They do a little thing. They could text yes to this one or no to that one. At least then they can decide. But I can understand. I don't want, you know, Church Street is a cut-through street now. And it's, when the school lets out, I can't even get out of Skoggins Avenue. And sometimes I can't even turn into my street because the cars are backed up. But that's the advantage of being in Morseville, and that's the disadvantage. We're in a good spot here, but everybody wants to come through here to get somewhere else. And eventually, maybe this is where they want to come to.
All right. Thank you. Anybody else who'd like to speak tonight? Seeing none. So we're going to close the public comments session, and then we'll have discussion. Is that okay?
Sure.
But yeah, I think your comments would be best within the board...
Okay.
As opposed to, you know, jumping back down and saying that.
We'll make my son do it.
Okay.
Because he's the one that cares. Well, I care too.
So I think we need a motion to close the public comments session. Anybody would like to make that motion?
I think we'll...
I have a second.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Carried unanimously. And now is the period for us as a board to comment, discuss, and be as prepared as we can for next month. Start with Catherine, are you prepared to make your comments?
Yes, I do have some comments. It was a pleasure to read this plan because it, for as long as I've been around, there was a lot of information in here compiled that I hadn't been able to put together in my own brain. So if nothing else, that will provide anybody that reads it that's less than familiar with the town than me to get really drawn in as to our population and our function and what we're trying to do. So that, I liked, I have a few comments, a lot of which are, some are like, yes, comments, and other, there are a couple where, you know, maybe it's a language, I would have changed the language if it was my paper document that I'd written, but it may not be appropriate. And so we can arrange a time to talk about that. In general, my concern in talking with people I know that like to ride bicycles, I was really glad to see bicycles a much more integrated part of this plan than in the predecessors. And so I would very much, yes, bike, oh, no, the bike path from Park to McCrimmon, yeah. So one thing that, about the bike paths in particular, I'll do that first, is that in some of the street cross-sections, and in particular, that's a divided way, in particular... Put that table though. There's a table. Well, anyway, my comments were that the sidewalks on collector streets are not, and even what are considered mino thoroughfare streets in our town map, are really, those sidewalks really do not have enough width on them to accommodate people that might be walking to pick up their child or in the morning, and my son, who has been told only to ride, I didn't tell him this, but somebody told him only ride on the sidewalks. I was raised, you're not allowed to, you get a ticket. So we need to somehow address that, and especially when the greenway path gets up here to the sidewalk. I mean, it's not wide enough for all the people, for the people and the kids coming by on skateboards and the kids or family on bicycles. And so it would be nice to see that larger and/or made wider. And then the, I guess this one kind of ties together, there was a table in here that had minor roads and, I'm sorry, I had it. I'll find it. But anyway, I'd like to see sidewalks on the both sides of, I believe it was intersections with things, with streets like McCrimmon and Town Hall Drive. What will, you know, the traffic, you know, essentially for connection across all the intersections.
While he pulls that up, Member Willis, if you could just remember, the microphone is picking up your paper, not to put your paper on top of it, because then you become inaudible, so.
Catherine, while that's coming up, so I think your comment is that on page 4-4 of this draft, we show a pathway which is eight to 12 feet wide, which, you're a little bit worried that may not be enough for both pedestrians and cyclists. And that's probably the section that Ben is pulling up. Here we go.
Yes. Oh, here's that. I'm sorry.
I think Ben has it on the screen.
Yes, this path, you know, it needs to be an eight to 12-foot. And on something like Town Hall Drive or Davis, McCrimmon, Morseville Carpenter, we really are doing ourselves a disservice to not have it on, have a pathway this sort of both sides of the street, especially for something like Davis, as well as it being a little bit wider. Five feet is not wide enough.
Right.
Eight feet is really not quite enough either. And I'm not suggesting we go change the width of all our paths. Maybe we need to educate our children not to ride on the sidewalk. And I, so...
So I just wanted to point out, we do have figure four-six, which shows all of the future side paths, which would be those, our standard for side paths will be 10 feet wide. We do have a few areas where we're recommending an eight-foot wide. Most of the time where we recommend an eight-foot wide, that's because there's a...
Other mid...
...route or something. So I do just want to point out, we do recommend side paths on both sides of McCrimmon, all the way from, actually Louis Stevens, all the way down to Aviation. They are, the side paths are being constructed on this segment. They will be eight feet wide, but there is also going to be five-foot wide bike lanes on the road there.
Great, yeah.
But we also have side paths on both sides of Davis Drive, and then your other place you mentioned on Town Hall Drive, we do have a recommended side path to connect the two sections of greenway. So that is in the plan, in the draft plan as proposed, as well as side path on Morseville Parkway. The one road, I believe you mentioned, that we don't currently have anything proposed on is Morseville Carpenter Road. We did look at that as we were designing the project that will go under construction later this year on Morseville Carpenter Road. We made a decision not to widen the sidewalks on that road to multi-use paths for a couple reasons. One being that it would have increased the cost substantially for the road project, and the other being that we have the parallel greenway route. And there's, so we have the parallel greenway route, we have, at least, we're making sure we have at least five-foot wide sidewalks along the entire length of the road, but that's why we're not proposing multi-use paths or side paths on that road.
And that's not particularly a divided road per se. And I think what goes along, this is great, and I love bike paths and all this, wonderful. The, the other thing going, this was table three-five, and on page three-nine, and I know that, or I think I was reading in here, that we're only going to put sidewalks on part of the intersection or crossings on part of the intersection. And I, one, really prefer, would advise, and I know you're the expert, but all four intersect corners, and I know we don't own one or more of those corners, but that as well as other intersections, so like when airport hits, because right now, if my son wants to go to the Harris Teeter and be completely safe about it at 14, he goes down to Lake Grove and he rides up on the wrong side of the street, but that's where the path is. Because if he goes up, if he comes out airport and goes up that way, up Davis that way, there isn't any, you know, there's white dirt. Yes, he could take McCrimmon, but that gets a little sketchy right where Martha Stewartville comes out, and then getting across Davis to go over to the Harris Teeter, where he might try and get a job this summer in that shopping center. And he's also, and I'll be sure to bring this up with Carrie, he's riding his bicycle enough now that, you know, he's talking about wanting to ride it to Panther Creek. I get nervous, but a lot of it's kind of been fixed, but these, you know, some of these major roads are still... We've got, you know, me, I always say, go further than you have, you know? And ask for more than I actually, you know, I'll be happy with this, but you know me, Ben, that the bike paths are important and the crossing of the intersection. The one other comment that really caught my eye, it's not that, was the map, and I had it, wait, wait. It was a map of, with Town Hall Drive. Yeah, here we go. So this would be page 320. The map is not on that page, it's on 321, I suspect. Town Hall Drive, yes. So, yeah, there's a lot of walking and a lot of, I would say that walking, well, I'll leave that as this, but the sidewalk crossings, oh, so the divided median, and I believe it was talking about extending that divided median down to the traffic circle. But my argument is we've got a partial median in front of the Traybook, or excuse me, in front of Sterling Elementary, but people just spin around immediately, you know, they, the median's gone, so there's clearly no barrier I can cross. And I think ultimately that barrier should get, because if we move it closer to Cedar Fork, they're going to try with, you know, get into that traffic jam. It probably needs to go past, and it'd be, and I don't know how to ask for that, but if we're talking about conditions or making some improvements, I think making the road a divided, you know, it doesn't have to be as fancy as it is down here, but making it so that there is a physical barrier, you know, median is going to be far more effective and safe for our residents along there because it's parents and residents that make turns, at least I see two every school session I see.
Member Willis, if there's a specific existing traffic concern, if you will send that to me, I'm happy to pass it on to Chief Andrews.
Sure.
And so they can take a look at that.
Sure. And yeah, they're out there, but they're kind of minding the kids that are crossing the street.
Certainly, still happy to pass along, though.
So, Chief Andrews, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. But yes, that was, I saw some improvements, and I thought, wow, if we're going to make improvements on Town Hall Drive, and we're going to improve the median in parts of it, we should consider maybe at least some additional. It was a month since I read this.
To get back to one of your earlier points, Catherine.
Yes, sir.
You talked about, you know, your son going from basically Town Hall Drive to the Harris Teeter.
Yes.
Airport. Boulevard there is in Cary's jurisdiction, it's part of Twin Lakes.
Right. And I figure the Wegmans is going to require, but my son can't cross safely there. He has to go down Lake Grove.
Yep.
And at the traffic light that intersects, Lake Grove and the intersection of the food line is... Food Lion is his safe pro, or he's gotta go up to Parkside Valley Lane.
Yeah, I think that's a reflection of the fact that it's undeveloped along Davis Drive, not that we don't have it in the plan to include that, right? Is that more of the problem right now?
That is the case, but I've also seen the, um, needs to be a concerted effort, and I've seen the bike paths and some of the wider sidewalks going drastically narrower for no apparent reason. In, you know, up and down Davis Drive, between where Morrisville starts to intersect it, all the way up to where the park takes it over.
I mean, the plan now calls for the 10-foot wide along the rest of Davis Drive that's undeveloped.
Yes.
And then over time, if other sidewalks are redeveloped, they would probably align to that same width as well.
But if we keep it on the undeveloped side, that is on the far side of the street, which, yes, is Cary in a lot of ways, but it keeps it on the far side of the street, and so anybody that lives.
Member Willis, why don't you put together a complete list of the specific roadways that you have?
But that was my.
And it can be brought back to the next month's meeting, or you can even email it out to all your colleagues prior to, and if there's any ones that they want to consider next month, if a recommendation is made next month, those can be added as part of the recommendation if they're not reflected in the current plan.
Okay.
But yeah, connections and bike connections.
Thanks, Catherine. I know you have a lot of concern and a lot of thought that went into that, so it triggered a thought on my part, you know, we've got Davis Drive, which partly goes through Cary, and that shows the multi-use path on both sides. You know, Airport goes partly through Cary, and there's nothing shown on that. This is on figure four dot six.
So which, are you talking about the, which section of Airport?
The orphan bit of Airport that goes from Davis towards Town Hall Commons.
Okay, on this section.
Yeah, that's because Cary owns it, I guess, and it's already developed.
Yeah, as, as a general, we tried not to, we tried not to show proposed things in other jurisdictions. Davis Drive was a little, Davis Drive and Town Hall Drive, frankly, are two that were a little bit different because they go in and out of the jurisdictions. Aviation Parkway is one a little bit too, so we could certainly add it on to the, to it, but that section of Airport is pretty much constructed now, and we have no control over it, so I think that's why it was left off. As far as Davis Drive, it was more of, because of the, it would look a little, it would look a little bit more disjointed if we had left the gaps, and we know that Cary's plan has the side paths on Davis Drive as well, so we knew that that matched up with their plan.
I guess there's a difference between our plan of what we can control and the full connectivity view that we want to present to the residents of what they'll expect in the future along the, the disjointed areas, like you're trying to do, I think, on the main thoroughfares here.
And, and we did try and show, that's what the dark gray lines are outside of our jurisdiction, are existing and proposed other paths, so that we, we can give you, give our public a better sense of the overall connectivity.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
So.
Fair enough, okay.
Do you want us to change anything, or?
Well, I, I'd love it if we could shame Cary into putting it on there, but.
Well, I mean, I wonder if, could you put the Cary sections like, like graded out, or I don't know, maybe you've got too many different things, it makes it too hard to.
I mean, we can certainly take a look and see what they, I'm not sure what's out there. We can take a look and see what's out there, and if it is a multi-use path, we can put a dark gray line.
That would be good.
Are you talking about on Airport between?
Yes.
I, I, I go on that, I drive that road daily and have walked it many, many, many times, and there is a quality five-foot sidewalk on both sides of the road with, and it's a four-way stop, and.
Good.
Yeah, we'll see what happens.
Okay.
Some of us remember when Town Hall Drive was being built, and there were sidewalks on both sides, until you got to Cary, the gap, and then the sidewalks continued, so maybe we shamed them into doing the sidewalks eventually, so. All right, Tim, any comments?
I have this question, so it looked like in, early in your presentation, that you had a adjustment to Town Hall Drive, that there was an adjustment or a clarification of what was gonna happen. Can you just briefly go over what the revised plan is for that, so that we could provide comment on it?
Was that the addition of Town Hall Drive north of McCrimmon? Is that the?
Yeah, that's the one, so I, I think it would be helpful to just get an overall sense of what that is, because I know that impacts both Davis Drive and Church Street, and the flow between all of those. So just getting an overview of what that plan is as it stands would be helpful.
Yeah, and so the, this comment came up after we had already issued this draft, so that's why there's, where we will have it mapped in the next draft that you'll see in June. But essentially, what we have talked to RTP about, and gotten their initial okay on, is to provide a, an extension of Town Hall Drive that would roughly continue from the, from where it ends today, and sort of hug just to the east side of the stream, and, and up along these neighborhoods, and would end right around here, to provide access to Mason, to Providence Place, Mason Farm Road area. It would also, there's a, a small piece of right-of-way existing off of the backside of this circle here, that we would provide access to.
That intended to provide access to the 147 as well?
No, no, would not connect to 147.
So it would just kind of dead-end the neighborhood there?
Correct, because originally, when 147 was, in earlier drafts, when it was proposed to come down and, and intersect, as shown in our current adopted plan here at McCrimmon Town Hall, we had, we had identified a, a small connection here at Stockton Gorge to connect to 147, that would provide that back door. With pulling 147 out to Davis, we wanted, we still wanted to find a way to provide that back door, and we have a new subdivision that's currently under review in this location, and they're required to provide a street stub. And so essentially, the Town Hall Drive extension that we're talking about would just come up here and then run straight into that street stub at Providence, at the new subdivision in, at Providence Place. So, and it, it's really, purpose would be to provide access for these folks and these folks to get down to McCrimmon instead of having to go out to Church.
Thank you. Lee?
So this is like, we're just talking about just general stuff that came up today, I mean.
I, I open it up to any discussion, the whole plan.
I, I mean, I, you know, I think it generally done a good job of trying to incorporate like that. I know there are some people that don't quite appreciate that, but, you know, the fact that you, we extended this thing, and you guys went back through, I think it's made a better plan. But I will say, I'm glad that at least one other person in town remembers that we overwhelmingly voted to put in Crabtree Crossing Extension, because that is a fact, that is a thing that happened, and I, I'm still personally against even what we've done so far, but I'm definitely against taking it out, as Mr. Slink suggested, because we've already got the problem where it was taken out before, and now people feel like it can never be put back in again. So this whole revisiting the transportation plan every seven, however many years, kind of backfires, because people aren't really understanding, this is a living plan that's supposed to be redone. You know, I am still, I'm still in favor of that connection.
Yeah.
Just like, like 87% of the people who voted for that bond issue and said, please raise my taxes, and part of that should be raised, you know, make that connection.
Thank you, Lee. Arlene?
So Ben, we're working off the February revised draft, and then there's other stuff now that is going to be incorporated. How soon before the June? And this might be an impossible question to ask, but how soon before the June meeting is the semifinal draft going to be available?
We can promise you a week before your meeting, either Thursday or Friday, the week before your meeting. We will endeavor and try to get it out before then if we can, but at this point, all we can guarantee is that it will be out at least the Friday before your meeting.
I was, I was thinking, what I need to do now with all this stuff that's going on, personally, I need to just start at page one. So I'm just wondering how much time I'd have to do that. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And you'll have hard copies, I could pick up one?
Yes, we'll, we'll have hard copies once again, that'll be picked, that can be picked up at our office.
And, and again, it's a recommended timeline, so if the board as a whole feels as if, you know, one week was not adequate to do another deep dive, we can talk about a timeline. You know, it's, it's making sure that you're able to provide an educated, comprehensive recommendation, and that's what's important to us.
No, so I read through all the, the recent comments public. Somewhat to Lee's sentiment there, I agree, I think we, we have compromised a lot of, I think, what a lot of us feel about some of the extensions, to incorporate those changes that the, the public has asked for. We didn't do it to their extreme side of the opinion scope, but I think we did it somewhere in the middle, and I'm happy with that product for now, especially with the fact that it doesn't seem to be a project that we can commit to anytime in the near, you know, soon future, anyway. And so I, I'm, I'm happy with where we've, we've taken that. As to the changes, I think the feedback.
Ben, I had a question about the, the public comment session. Can you give us a feel for how many people contributed, participated?
For the outreach events?
Yes.
So I think we've, we've had more at some and fewer at others, but I think overall, we've probably averaged in the five to 10 people per outreach event. I know at several ones that, that I've been at, we've had only a couple of them. I know we've had a couple of them that I have not been able to attend that, where we've had some more folks come by, so Courtney may be able to, to give some insight there, but generally speaking, I think, at least from the, the sessions, the events I've been able to attend, the feedback, for the most part, has been positive. And, and I think people, for the most part, appreciate the work that's gone in and, and seem to be pretty happy with the plan as a whole. I think there are still some concerns about, you know, some of the extensions that we've talked about, but overall, and I've had, at least at a couple of events where folks have come up and talked to me, and they, they came out, you know, and they were certainly ready for, to complain about an extension, and as we talk through everything, and they realize how the recommendation of, has changed, they may not still be extremely happy, but they're, they're better, they realize it's a compromise. So overall, I would say, I think the events have been positive, and we've had some, our, our outreach, I think, has worked. I know I've had several folks at different events come up, holding the postcard that we mailed out, so we know the postcards have worked, so.
Excellent, thank you.
And in addition, I do have some analytics, the, we can't necessarily gauge, postcard means X many people, but we can see how many hits we have. And to give you an idea, the transportation plan had zero hits in January, and trying to quickly pull up the numbers, so now I'm going off the top of my head, but after the postcard went out, it jumped up to 999 hits, and it stayed fairly high. So you'll start to see kind of as social media, there's lots of little bursts that occur, suddenly you'll get an uptick, and so it, the message is getting out there. I can provide you all, I can send the email on, on that I had pulled, with a lot of the numbers. Can't necessarily say what one thing is triggering the numbers, but people are definitely, you know, hearing about it. And most of the people I spoke to, with the exception of the people working out at MFAC, you know, that I basically accosted as they entered and exited the building, they all were there because of the postcard. So I think, I didn't attend the Park West one, and I don't know necessarily, but lots of people specifically showed up to events because they received the postcard in the mail, and they knew nothing about it, until they got the postcard in the mail. So we're actually capturing some people that have not participated to date. For the most part, I've heard from a lot of cyclists, I feel like that was kind of a common theme that I've had out there, overall, really happy. I think it's a positive direction, there were some certain areas where they wanted to see a little bit of changes. Had a couple more people talk to me about Crabtree Crossing Extension. There's two sides to it. Some people are very disappointed in, in the action on both sides. They're disappointed you changed it to 25-plus years, because that virtually means, in their opinion, it will happen after they're dead, and then you're, they're mad because you didn't take it all together. So there's two sides to that, that I'm definitely heard, and it's been equal. But I have not specifically run into anybody, except for one couple I know, that came to some of the public comment sessions here. And they were asking some more questions and all. Definitely, I don't think we're cheering it along, but weren't as dissatisfied as they were in the onset.
People do realize that Crabtree Crossing doesn't cross Crabtree Creek until the extension's put in. That's just a clever name for something that doesn't cross the, the Crabtree Creek, I'm, I'm just, you know.
There's a lot of confusion with regards to some of the information that's out there. I was amazed by a number of people that would state something, and I'm like, well, actually. So there's been a lot of clarification of information that's out there, you know, and, and that's with any process. No matter what information you get out there, it's whatever they read on social media, tends to be the favorable, you know, or fact, if you will. You know, when there is, one particular person I was talking about, they're like, well, this is, this is, and I was like, well, no, here it is, it's a little bit different, you know, and I'm pointing to the poster, and they're like, oh, so basically, this is like the news, it's all fake, you know? So it's, there's misunderstandings, but there's been a lot of true learning, I think, that's happening now, and that's nice to see.
Okay, so we're gonna expect the new draft about a week before the June meeting. I, I think we should have a goal of giving a recommendation to council in June, but if not there, then, you know, we'll address that at the time, because there is a lot of new material, and it does give us a chance to, as, to quote Courtney, another deep dive into the whole thing, so. So we'll leave that as a goal, but no promise to the council that we'll have our recommendation by June. And can we address you or Marty about getting hard copies, or you're gonna automatically make a hard copy?
Marty will automatically email y'all when a hard copy's available to pick up.
Okay. Is it possible to get the Michelle version, which is like the smaller, more manageable, smaller size, 11 by 17?
We, we can print it out a couple of different ways for you, so if you want each page reduced down to 11 by 7, I mean, from the 11 by 17 to eight and a half by 11, we can do that. We can even print out two pages, you know, in one. I will caution, any smaller than eight and a half by 11, some of the details cannot be read. I printed out my version that way, just because it's easier for me to drag around, but there's some details that get lost that way. Happy to print it out however each of you desire. If you want anything different than eight and a half by 11, we'll print it out that way, specifically let Marty know, we'll do double-sided eight and a half by 11.
So I'll, I'll think about that, but I forget which plan it was, but Michelle came with a nice concise version, so maybe you needed a good eyesight and perhaps a magnifying glass, but at least.
Don't just be younger.
At least you could port it around more easily than this thing, so, anyway, detail, I'll, I'll talk to Marty about that. Any other comments on our transportation plan? All right. Then we will move on to the next item of the agenda. I love these agendas, so we will, automatically, we go from six to 10 as progress.
It, it means you're efficient. So moving on to the handbook, Michelle is not able to make it this evening, she had a family commitment, so I'm gonna quickly cover. She did update the few items that were discussed last time, specifically changed, clarified the order of voting, you know, basically, it's a, you know, voice vote with a hand for clarification, and then clarified the time was 11 o'clock. Also. Also, each of you, if Marty has not provided it to you, will be providing a copy of the acknowledgement form. If you can please sign that before you leave this evening. It's basically saying that you understand, you agree to the terms of this handbook. If you would like a printed handbook, please contact Marty. I'll let her know this evening, and we can print one out and have it available for you to pick up if you so desire. If not, a final version, word version, will be sent as a separate email to you. So you can have that, and it's not necessarily in your giant package, since I know it's a thick package. Does anybody have any questions?
I don't think so.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
The next item is the latest version of the planning-related activities that occurred in April. According to this, it was a slow month. I'm not sure I felt it that way. But there were no new development applications that were submitted, and nor were there any administrative approvals. As we start to enter the summer season, it's actually not uncommon for our semittals to go down. They pick back up in the fall, because they want them to be approved and out the door, so they can start turning dirt when it's warm. So this is typically the moving dirt season, not the plant semittel season, so it's not that surprising at all to me. Town council, if you remember last month, I mentioned the ETJ expansion request. Town council did recommend moving forward and has requested the county to start the process. It's a good six-month process, most likely, could be a little bit shorter, could be a little bit longer in expanding our ETJ. Not on here, but related to that is I have a meeting set with the town of Cary to talk about some of our ETJ boundaries. We're going to try to identify areas where we can relinquish parts of ours, they can relinquish parts of theirs, and then we can go to the county and ask them to redefine our boundaries in certain areas. And for example, we have a parcel that's 100% surrounded around town of Cary parcels. Logically, it will not be built in Morrisville, and to improve the developable ability of a parcel, it makes sense to do some swapping of viable land. Same thing with one of our ETJ expansion areas. There's a little sliver of land in Cary's ETJ that's on the east side of the tracks, or the west side of the tracks, have always been developed. It, it's logical to pick up these little random pieces. So we're going to have a comprehensive meeting about that and discussion to see if there are opportunities to potentially switch. ETJ swaps are fairly simple. It gets more complicated when we have vacant land that's been incorporated, and that would be a legislature request. Don't know if we're going to go that far in the process. We'll have to see when we start really honing in on some of these vacant parcels and make decisions from there as to what guidance we provide to our respective coun- respective councils.
I'm glad you're having that meeting. About 18 years ago now, one of the commissioners at the time suggested that Morrisville took over Preston, and Cary could have a couple of our apartments, so you might want to start floating that.
Michael's vacant parcels, but let me reiterate that one.
A bit of it at a time, you know.
Keeping as many of deer happy as possible. We'll still feed them.
And your hunters.
And the last little bit, though, is we put a little tidbit in here regarding the land use plan update and transportation plan outreach in there as well. I am going to add one thing. As part of our outreach for the land use plan, we have DIY kits. So what DIY kits are, is say you are a manager in an office, and you have meetings, and you would be gracious enough to host one of these DIY events. They take about an hour, but instead of staff having to attend multiple meetings, we can pick up more public participation. So say you work at Lenovo, and you're able to get people together and do one of these little DIY kits. You pick it up, you fill out all the information, you drop it back off, and we've just collected several pieces of information that we may not be able to capture otherwise. It's a new, it's the first time we've ever done it, the first time I've heard of it, actually happening in the area. And I think you may get some more honest feedback if staff's not sitting there or standing there staring at an individual. So it's going to be a new approach. So if you work in the area, specifically Morrisville, and there's something that you would want to potentially host, it's set and ready to go. The instructions in there, pins are in there. You have little stickers to go ahead and post stuff on the wall. It's, it's an easy breezy little kit that takes about hours of your time. All the instructions are pretty straightforward. If y'all just want to take a look at it after the meeting, you're welcome to do so. But if you know of anybody else that may like to do that, please feel free to pass the information along. The more we have out there, the better the land use plan will ultimately be, in my opinion, because you have more input and different input.
Not necessarily workplace, but maybe social events or other?
Correct. If you have a wine tasting at your house, you can do the same time, but.
Just do it after the wine. It'll be more honest response.
There are rules, right? No rules on the, the type of gathering that we can do as that.
No, you can do whatever you want to do. I mean, even, you know, say for example, you have a local Cub Scout group, they can fill that out. So I mean, don't just think adults, think kids as well. Any group that you have, you know, the Rotary Club, the Exchange Club, you know, any of those where you can potentially take it. There's lots of opportunities. And, you know, I said, you're primarily in Morrisville. The reality is, if it's right next door in Cary, the input's still really good. You know, I don't know if we want to drag it all the way down to the southern part of Cary, but definitely if you're in parts of Cary that we know travel through Morrisville all the time, definitely can get some good feedback that way as well. No pressure on any particular groups. Sorry, I didn't mean to throw anybody out there. I was just tossing out ideas.
Love the host one, yeah.
Thank you, Courtney. Uh, board comments. Let's start this then. Rob, any comments?
Nothing from me?
Not any? Me? Catherine?
Now I'll have some meetings, and I can also have a few other stuff. But if, like, the pool opens real soon in my neighborhood, which is on Town Hall Drive, and there's a lot of kids, is it something I can like do like we do here with the open houses and have the maps up, and, or is it a sit-down and give a lecture for 30 minutes?
It's definitely more of a, you need to gather people in one spot for an hour, because it's three questions, basically, that you're answering. So it's not so much polling people. If you want to head down the route of polling people, my recommendation is to drag your iPad out to the pool and randomly walk around people and have them fill out map social. When that goes live, and that will be going live next week, same day as Spring Fest. That's another option, you know, if you're into harassing people as they hang out at the pool. But yeah, I mean, it's just-
I know, but-
No, but I know what you're saying, but you could easily ask people, I mean, it's all it is, is a login and a password. You know, your login's your email address, your password, and then you can start creating your own fun maps.
Yeah.
So it's really kind of a fun kid exercise, too, if you really got down to it. You can take pictures, you know, for example, I would love to see a crosswalk somewhere. I can take a picture, mark it on the map, and say, this is why. You know, if there's a derelict house, you can take a picture of it. Better yet, if there's a structure you love, you can take a picture of it and say, I want more of this in Morrisville. So it kind of goes all directions. That would be a better tool.
Yeah.
If you're out there is to have people, you know, map social. I mean, you can do the same thing at work. But this is definitely a one-hour sit-down, I mean, it probably can happen less, but to target. So we have one of these, we just ask that they kind of come back as quickly as possible, so we can get more out, out there. Just put these together today, so this is really my only kit right now. But we're definitely starting to just kind of put the feelers out there.
I have no comments, so I think we're ready for item 14. adjourned. One second.
Second.
All of you, say aye.
Aye.
Where?